Good morning. Welcome to the third hearing of the Modern Slavery Committee's review of the Modern Slavery Act 2018. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Aora Nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Dr. Joe McGurk. I'm Chair of the committee in the room today. Are the other members of the committee, Secretary at Hansard and a councillor from Converge International. I ask everyone in the room, please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. And I urge you to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. Welcome, Mr. Moi Taraga. Welcome. Thank you very much for coming and making time to give evidence. I also just wish to acknowledge members in the gallery from ACAN and DOMAS 8.7 as well. Welcome. Now, could you please, Moi, please state your name and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Yes. My name is Moi Taraga. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you very much. The committee has prepared questions, which I think you may have received a copy of.
Yes.
And we'll go through those. We'll take turns to ask those questions, but they'll be the same format. There may be some clarification sought on aspects of the questioning, but we won't allow any new questioning or deviations from the lines of those questioning.
Thank you.
If at any time you need a break, please let me know. And before we start, would you like to make, start by making, before we start the questions, would you like to start by making a short statement?
Yes, please. Yeah, bullwinkleaka. That's hello in my native language. Thank you Chair Joe McGurk and the Modern Slavery Committee, members for your warm welcome and the important work that you are doing. Before I talk about my experiences, I'd like to make a few acknowledgements. I'd also like to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Aora Nation and all the Aboriginal people, especially the Kinsella Boys and others who have lived through their mission days. Technically, Australia didn't have slavery. We had blackbirding and indentured labour. 177 years ago, 65 men and boys arrived at Boyd Town, near Eden, in the colony of New South Wales. Those men and boys were from Vanuatu and parts of New Caledonia. They were the first recorded South Sea Islanders conscripted to work in Australia. The man who raised for their transport, Benjamin Boyd, was a businessman who was obsessed with labour costs. It didn't take long for that scheme to fall apart. Within two months, the islanders who survived their conditions all bolted from Boyd's properties and were making their way back to Sydney to try and get home. I'm mentioning this because in 2024, I speak to a lot of Pacific Islanders in the same situation, stuck in limbo here in Sydney after leaving their employers under the Pacific Australia Labour Mobility Scheme. In many ways, I'm riding the wave of the ripple that they created a long time ago. I'd also like to acknowledge that I'm here today because I am supported to be here in my role as advisor to both the Australian Catholic Anti-Slavery Network and DOMAS 8.7 Remediation Service. It also, I've also received great support as a person of limited experience on the New South Wales Anti-Slavery Commissioner's Advisory Panel. People with limited experience do need support to undertake consultation with government. DOMAS 8.7 is the only modern slavery remediation service whose work is informed by modern slavery survivor. And that survivor is me. And yes, I'm on the payroll. My paid role is to ensure a best practice grievance mechanism and a trauma-informed response. I contribute my experience on everything from worker surveys to remedy pathways and processes. I also contribute language and cultural advice and provide input into everything from worker surveys to user access. This is my fourth public speaking engagement this week, including the New South Wales Local Government Procurement Conference and a UN Business and Human Rights Forum. I'm incredibly grateful to my team of allies, ACAN and DOMAS 8.7, the Catholic Exodus of Sydney for the support I've received, as well as the Office of the New South Wales Anti-Slavery Commissioner, where I am a member of the Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will start with the first question, Mr. Taraga. Could you please describe your experience of modern slavery, including the circumstances that led to your situation and how it affected you?
I'll start with my story. My story as a limited experience of modern slavery in Australia began in 1988. I was a 17-year-old when I was recruited by a trusted relative in Fiji to come to Australia to speak fruit. My father had passed, and I wanted to earn money to support my mum. I have left school at 15 to start working, but my wages weren't enough. One day, my relative came to see me and offered to arrange work for me in Australia. It sounded like a chance to do better for mum. There were 13 of us who signed up. We referred to each other as cousins. When I arrived in Australia, my passport was handed over to a migration agent. At that stage, I was told there was a debt to pay off for my travel and visa costs. In a few months, I was working on farms around Mildura. There was never any contract or accounting for my work. I should have been making over $400 a week. Of course, I never received any money. My relative said he was sending money back to my mum. Horticulture is a hard work. I would jump on the track at 6:00 AM and prune and pick grapes until dusk, six days a week. I lived in a peters yard with eight others. It is hard to believe you can be hungry working on a farm, but we were. All the while, at the back of my mind, I kept thinking, at least I'm helping mum out. Two years after I began working in Australia, I managed to access a public payphone. Her first question was, are you going to send us some money? I was in total shock. Not a single cent of two years had made it back to her. It was the same for the other cousins, and we were all devastated. That feeling of betrayal burns deep inside you for a long time. That anger, denial, the depression, the despair. I had all those feelings and worse. I didn't know what to do or who I could turn to. I felt trapped. My relative was someone who was respected in our community. I knew I would be shamed if I complained or went home empty-handed. I was the one who would be seen as a wrongdoer or ungrateful because I did not make good on the opportunity to earn money working in Australia. And this painful shame made me afraid to ask for help. So I kept on working in the hope that I could find a way out. In this time of crisis, I found help with two Australian farmers I met at a church. Audrey saw I was troubled and asked me if I was okay. When she heard my story, Audrey and her husband Alan asked me to come and work on their farm. Two of us left in the middle of the night, and we went to stay with Audrey and Alan. They paid me properly, and they provided me with the support to get back on track and start sending money back to mum. Audrey helped me to get my passport back and build a new life. I cannot thank her enough for what she did for me. When I met her again a few years ago, she just said it was the right thing to do. It might not seem like much, but when she asked, are you okay? That was enough to put me on a path to freedom. I got on with rebuilding my life and putting the whole experience behind me. I did not think there was any point in telling my story until years later. How did this experience affect me? I don't like to think of myself as a victim. I tried to make the best of opportunities and contribute to communities I've lived in. Not everyone survives the experience. 13 cousins came to Australia. I have no idea what became of six of them. There is a cost to speaking out. When I started speaking out, I was excommunicated by one side of my family. For others, the cost is more serious. Some get threatened with violence towards themselves or their families or assaulted by the perpetrators. Not my experience, but it is for others. So it's another reason not many people will talk about their limited experience.
Thank you. We just wanted to know if you received any information that helped to identify your situation as one of exploitation or slavery?
Like most people, I don't know I was in modern slavery until many years later, after I was in it. I escaped my situation through contact with people of goodwill in the community around me. The debt bondage, forced labour, coercive control, deceptive recruitment, these are our concepts you learn about after the fact. It was only when I met Rosie Aleve, a British woman whose daughter was murdered while she was doing farmwork in Australia, that I could relate my own experience to something called modern slavery. And now I know that you find yourself, that you find modern slavery in construction, hospitality, cleaning, security, car washes, fisheries and farmwork. H care is a high risk as well. Anywhere work is performed by temporary migrant labour is high risk, but especially that work that involves labour hire service providers. Migrant workers are vulnerable to all kinds of exploitation. They depend on their employer for visa sponsorship, for their accommodation and pay. If a migrant worker picks up, they have a lot more to lose than a job. It's their future on the line. If they complain, often employers often threaten to report them to authorities for breaching the terms of their visa, and they get deported. I see a lot of abuses that may be modern slavery and certainly labour exploitation. One of the common abuses is cash back. That's when workers are paid, but they are forced to immediately hand back all their cash. Another abuse is when labour hire charges excessive fees for transport, for accommodation and equipment. This is very common among seasonal workers brought to Australia on the palm skin. Recently, I've spoken to workers who give back 80% of their wages in deductions to their approved employers. Since I began sharing my own story publicly, I've held a lot of workers from the Pacific. I've taken more than 300 calls from workers alone in some kind of distress in the last year. New South Wales does not have labour licensing. Queensland does, but I can't vouch for its work. The protections and supports built into our systems are working. And as a migrant worker on a bonded visa, you have little to no protection. I know workers who have complained and been sent home. I know workers who have got injured and been sent home. No one is checking the conditions that gas workers live in. I've seen a lot of that accommodation, and some of it is appalling. Even when you put it out on the media, no one cares enough to improve it. There are no independent or effective worker voice or grievance mechanisms in these workplaces. One of the saddest things I do is help family members send home the bodies of their loved ones or arrange for burials here in Australia. Compulsory superannuation usually includes life insurance cover. But I don't know of any Pacific worker whose life insurance policy has been paid out after their death. I know of only one person who had their superannuation balance paid after they passed. I've also spent many hours helping workers access medical care after being injured on their job. I've helped sick workers negotiate time off with their employers. Australians are entitled to ten six days a year, free Medicare, free treatment in the emergency department. Guest workers are too scared to take leave. Guest workers pay tax and health insurance premiums. But they have to pay their medical bills upfront. They then seek reimbursement from the insurer, and sometimes that takes weeks. For workers who leave their bonded employers, there's double jeopardy. They are working day after day in precarious work and are even more vulnerable to abuses. Australia now has thousands of people living under the radar without any visa. Some have been here for decades.
Thank you. Thank you, Moi. I'll ask the third question. So what support services did you seek during your escape from modern slavery? And you mentioned, you know, when you went to church, speaking with one of the parishioners there. But were there any other sort of support services like healthcare or housing or legal advice besides that you were able to access?
Recovery from my experience, or remedy as it's referred to in the context of modern slavery, has different meaning, has meant different things at different times of my life. When I was 19, it meant escaping a bad situation, feeling safe, being able to buy my own food and clothes and taking back control of my life, getting my passport back and building a new life. It highlights the importance of community organisation, the going to church. And people in that parishioners highlight the importance of community organisations in supporting guest workers. I didn't tell my story to anyone or go to the police. None of us did. We got on with rebuilding our lives and putting the whole experience behind us. I think it's fair to say that trauma of being trafficked scarred all of us, and our families one way or the other. Back then, remedy meant safety and security. It was also very connected with my sense of purpose, being able to send money home to my mum, to support my mum. One encouraging development lately is the inclusion of people with limited experience like myself in remedy planning. I'm working with a number of organisations to share my limited experience and to advocate for measures to help people to safety and recover from the impact of modern slavery. Remedy planning is working out how your organisation will respond when you find people in your operations or supply chains who are impacted by modern slavery or slavery conditions. I will always be full of praise for an organisation that finds people impacted by modern slavery in the operations or supply chains. We want to find people with indicators of labour exploitation, get them out of it, of these situations, understand how it happened and ensure it doesn't happen again. For people living in a situation of modern slavery, you are going to need support immediately. You will need cash management, welfare and accommodation. At DOMAS 8.7, we have those cash management systems in place, and there's only one safe house in Australia dedicated to modern slavery victims survivors, and that is run by the Salvation Army. The New South Wales Government does not provide any specific funding to people impacted by modern slavery at the moment. People living in situations of criminal exploitation need a safe haven. If people are vulnerable, are in a vulnerable situation and a perpetrator is alerted, there can be serious consequences for the victim. As well as providing informed consent to any action that involves them, victims of modern slavery should be provided with independent advice. My team assists organisations with timely confidential assessments and advice, root cause analysis and recommendations about remedial actions and mitigating future risks. Every situation is different. However, organisations need to understand that the rights of workers potentially impacted by modern slavery and what to do to prevent further harm.
Thank you, Moi. It sounds to me like this question was in three parts. So you've answered that question in terms of what you have done for others. But with yourself, it sounds like you, at the time, didn't really recognise that you were in modern slavery until years later, so.
I think 30 years ago, if I had reported, sorry to cut. If I had reported, I would have been sent back to Fiji directly. And that would have been the shortest answer. Because it would have been, no one would have had any knowledge then, even though we had the section 217, 271 already in place.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, we have to understand your situation before we can do anything. But you mentioned that, so thank you, Moi.
And I thank you.
Thank you so much again for being here today and being willing to give evidence. So my question is about, I guess, what can be done? So what specific steps do you believe the government should take to improve support victim survivors of modern slavery, both in terms of that immediate assistance, but also in that recovery phase?
I think it's important for anyone in contact with people in higher sectors to be able to have access to resources and staff training. You can only respond if you recognise the situation someone is in. Many cases of modern slavery are identified because a trained employee responded safely when someone asked for help. Catholic organisations have access to dozens of peer learning modules through the Australian Catholic Anti-Slavery Network. I also received staff training this year for my role. I participated in a CPR corporate social compliance auditing training, and I hope desire passed the exam.
Well done.
Thank you. This training expanded my knowledge on social compliance audits. Access to education and training and development is something people living extremely busy need. It leads to employment, and that is also a essential part of their remedy. Once I got on my feet, I had to find forgiveness in my own heart and a new family. In this context, remedy for me has also meant having the space and the opportunity for healing. A positive culture connection has been really important for that healing. In my case, it's my church and my Pacific diaspora community. Recently, I've drawn a lot of energy from the survivors I've met through my work with the New South Wales Anti-Slavery Commission Advisory Panel, Commissioners Advisory Panel. And again, I'd like to acknowledge James and his team for their great support. As allies and for the enormous body of work they pulled through, they pulled together in a very short time. What brought us to the New South Wales Government is to put people with limited experience at the centre of your modern slavery response and prioritise the sectors where there's the highest risk. That way, people who need help are most likely to get it. Is that the answer?
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming along. I've been troubled before by the chair, from the chair, I've deviated from the questions. So I need to stick with the questions, and I promise to do so, Mr. Chair. But before I do so, can I just say thank you so much for coming along today? Can I just say your opening statement and your answers, particularly to the questions that have been posed, are so many more times powerful in terms of what you've said, and indeed people will be able to read it in handsout after, than multiple speeches that any one of us could give in the parliament? Because it doesn't come close. We can talk about it and make comment about it and judgements about it. But from yourself and the support you're getting, it is quite extraordinary. And I don't think you probably appreciate, or you may, how powerful it is and how much it's capable of opening up hearts and minds than speeches by politicians. Although, we want to play, obviously, our role and doing our very best, but it's enormously important. My question really builds on, I think, some of the answers you've given already. And that's around you looking back and looking in and seeing what are gaps that currently exist in regards to the provision of services? So these are services directly assist and are important. But also at a higher level, the policy prescriptions or the policies that are in place, some of which may relate directly to the legislation or otherwise. So gaps in services and gaps in policies that you observe?
That's the biggest one.
Yeah, no, please, and go right ahead.
Allow me to be honest then.
Please.
Allow me to be honest.
I know you will be.
Yes. Well, let's have a look at the New South Wales frontline services. I'll start there. I'll start with the New South Wales Police. I have not heard of any worker seeking or getting assistance from the New South Wales Police. Migrant workers who are being exploited or abused at work are not viewed as potential victims of crime. The South Wales Police, they only seem interested in a migrant worker's visa status. That's why so many workers with irregular visa status avoid health services because they are afraid of deportation. The South Wales Police don't seem to have any knowledge of understanding of the Australian Criminal Code, Section 270, 271, modern slavery and human trafficking. And I'll talk about the New South Wales Coroner next. There would have been over 25 deaths of Pacifica women, workers in New South Wales over the past few years. There has not been a single investigation into the circumstances surrounding or leading up to the worker deaths or critical incidents. The New South Wales Coroner relies on the employer's version of the events from the local police brief of evidence without supporting evidence. The New South Wales Coroner's office does not seem to have knowledge and understanding of the Australian Criminal Code either, Section 270 and 271 of the modern slavery and human trafficking. Safe work, New South Wales. They have not demonstrated knowledge or understanding of the modern slavery crimes under the code, under the code, Section 270, 271. When the employer provides the accommodation for guest workers, why is the accommodation not included as part of safe work investigation? Overcrowded accommodation is common and causing fatigue. Poor nutrition, poor food safety is common because of insufficient cooking facilities. Dehydration is common because the workplace does not provide drinking water. There are no barriers to working in the full sun and heat stress, and that is common. There is no maximum number of hours, no cap on the number of hours a worker can be directed to work in a week. Without a legal cap on maximum number of hours of work, excessive work hours are common because it is legal. This week, I attended the launch of the Master Builders Report in this parliament into safe working hours in the construction sector. And in that report, they found that 30% of workers on building sites work in excess of 50 hours per week. The same goes for many high-risk industries such as hospitality and horticulture. So when a migrant worker dies, I'm not aware of any public sector agency in New South Wales providing support, financial assistance and death benefits. Is that the answer? Some of it?
No, no, that's excellent. That's very good. Anything else that you may have missed? No, but back to the chair.
You've identified there, if I could just follow on from that last question, some pretty specific instances and really cogent examples of where there are gaps in terms of frontline awareness and service provision. Is there anything from a policy perspective, is there anything from a policy perspective, perhaps a higher position that we could address or that there are gaps?
Yeah, my recommendations for the New South Wales frontline services, especially number one, to adopt policies and procedures to identify and safely refer potential victims of modern slavery to support and services. Number two, funding for mainstream welfare services to provide access for people impacted by modern slavery. Number three is to undertake modern slavery awareness training. Number four is to undertake cultural diversity training.
Thank you. That's the end of the formal questions. Is there anything further you would like to add?
Yeah, if I may, please the committee to broaden the discussion today. We need to talk about the whole ecosystem that creates the drivers of labour exploitation. Number one is migration. Hosting communities and local council, frontline services and first responders are not alerted to incoming groups of migrant workers on the palm scheme. Number two, procurement, requirement of government grants to accept the cheapest quote without consideration of cost-cutting and margin timeframes. James, reasonable steps. You know, there's 400 entities covered by the New South Wales Modern Slavery Act, have more resources available than any other jurisdictions in Australia, I believe. That's thanks to the expertise and energy of the New South Wales Anti-Slavery Commissioner, Dr. James Gokan, in his office. At the end of last year, James published his guidance on reasonable steps for covered entities, along with implementation timetable, inherent risk identification tool and other resources. The South Wales Procurement, you are now reporting annually on the following. Number one is the details vanity, including who authorized your annual report. Your procurement is paid by due diligence and risk. your procurement span by due diligence and risk factor, any stakeholder engagement you've undertaken, what you've done to identify relevant modern slavery risks, whether you've enacted a modern slavery policy, whether you've gotten, whether you've got a modern slavery risk management plan, what you are doing to monitor and evaluate the performance of your suppliers, what you've done on enabling access to grievance mechanisms. It's a long list and I understand that it's going to take some time to build maturity, maturity in the, in their responses. I'd stress reasonable here because there's actually a lot more to do than what you've been asked. Such as social audits, supplier onboarding to ethical sourcing platforms and remedy planning. There's over three thousand large corporations already and, and not, already and nonprofit organisations like the, the large Catholic agencies that I work for have been reporting under the federal act for more than five years. My hope is that suppliers who are doing the right thing by their workers will be successful in that tenders at all levels of government procurement. Australian businesses are profiting from their labour. Can New South Wales find the political courage to give them the protection and the recognition they deserve? I've always believed that Australia should be the best place in Australia, best, best place in the world to be a migrant worker. That's what I'm fighting for. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Can I just follow on from those comments that you made, particularly in regard to the reasonable steps? Because I think this is quite important. And just preface this by saying that, as you have indicated, there has been requirements for some years for large companies to report and these reports are available. Similar requirements have been operational in the UK, I think, for some time. And they've recently reviewed their act and the House of Lords Committee has recommended that they actually need to now lift from reporting into due diligence and accountability around that. In fact, they've been quite disappointed, I think, in the effectiveness of just the reporting. It's a bit hard for us to say here, but I think what, what you've made is that the reasonable steps that the Anti-Slavery Commissioner has outlined in terms of the procurement for New South Wales Government agencies do provide a very robust description of due diligence.
Yes.
You would agree with that?
Yes.
That certainly was my impression from the recent conference that I attended. And when I compared the discussions there with what had been produced here, frankly, it was quite impressive what the Anti-Slavery Commissioner and the team had come up with.
Absolutely.
And so obviously, reporting by New South Wales Government agencies has just started. But it will be important to monitor how successfully they do apply those principles and it will take some time. But you, I guess I'm just, just checking your evidence that this description of due diligence, this application of these steps is a critical component now in, I guess, furthering this issue or furthering action on this cause.
I would like to take that question on notice and reply to it in writing if that's okay. So it's a big one. I need to get the facts. Yeah.
Yeah, and I apologize. We didn't flag it ahead of you, ahead of time. But you did raise the issue of the reasonable steps. And I think that is an important part of consideration and awareness raising, actually.
Absolutely, yes.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well done.
Well done. We will, we can now stop the public broadcast. Thank you. Relation to any questions on notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
We'll call it here and enjoy closing now. Thank you. Thank you very much.